What you are looking at is the campaign sign that Mr. Jay Moreno, who's running for city council post three. It's a very unique sign and he feels it probably encapsulated a lot of the anxiety and frustration that the voters have in St. Mary's. So I am here getting ready to interview a very unique candidate and so I hope you tune in to watch and hear what he has to say about what his positions are for solving the issues and problems facing St. Mary's, Georgia. Have a great day.
Hello, I'm Jeremy Spencer with All On Georgia, the Camden County affiliate. How are you today, Mr. Moreno?
Fine, welcome to my home.
Thank you.
And I'm not buttering you up for any softballs, but I'm sure I speak for the whole community and the other candidates when I say that we really, really appreciate you doing these interviews.
Well, we appreciate it too because we feel like it gives us a better insight into the candidate. We feel like it gives the voter an opportunity to get to know the candidate, what they actually mean in context. So if they have any questions about what the candidate is saying, they can rewind the video and listen to it, or they can play it out there. So we do appreciate you giving us the time to come into your home and do this.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna turn this phone off, which I normally do in the process. I have to meet once before. Okay, so I just came in from outside your house and you have a very unique sign which resembles your campaign yard sign. It's been seen around town and there's been a lot of discussion about it. So what I'd like for you to do, if you could, is explain why, explain the meaning and the design behind your campaign sign that you're hauling around.
Well, take it from the top, the very first line says, "Have you finally had enough of councils crap?" And the reason I use that phrase, not that it's not something that I would typically think of myself, but I had actually in conversation with a number of people, heard almost verbatim comments like, you know, I'm really, I've just really had enough of this mayor and council's crap. So that's the question I posed as an icebreaker, attention getter type thing. The nuclear detonation in the background, you know, the phrase "nukem" is a fairly common phrase. And the reason I use that is I'm not just running against Jim Gant. I could have just gone any, meany, mighty mo and picked any of the three seats. And as a matter of fact, I had originally signed up to run for post two, or had said that I was going to run for post two before qualifying week. And then when some changes happened and Jim Goodman, that I think very highly of, declared for post two, I switched over to post three. Okay, but the fact of the matter is that I am running against all seven of the current incumbents. Because I think the whole bunch has proven over the last decade or so that they just really have lost touch with what city government in a city of 16,000 should be all about and what it should be doing. I think that maybe they had a decimal point slip out of place and think we're like 160,000. Or in the case of our most recently departed planning zoning guy, often thought that he thought maybe we were 16 million with some of the things he was doing. So anyway, that's the whole "nukem" thing. And then there's some lines below it on different panels, blue and white, that say, "Full funding for common needs." And to me, that's all the city should be doing is filling a very prescribed list of legitimate needs that only the city can fulfill. And quite simply, there are police protection, fire protection, not necessarily in that order, potable water supply, sewer matters. In this community, drainage is a big problem. And street maintenance and utilities maintenance, anything much beyond that is out of the realm of what a city should be doing. Disaster preparedness, of course.
Right, and I'd like to get into a lot of those topics, if you could just get on that, define what you said within your sign.
And then the final line on the sign says, "Zero funding for elitist wants." We need to be dealing with needs, we have neglected needs to an absolutely absurd point. When I rode out there for the first time frankly in years, as a result of Mr. Rob Moore's yeoman work on highlighting the problems they're having with drainage ditches out there in Crooked Root Plantation, it certainly wasn't the first time it had been at Crooked Root Plantation, but it was the first time in a number of years. I was shocked, I mean, my God, the ditches are so filled in that in some cases it's just a little slight indentation of about six inches in the ground with the grass completely grown with. That doesn't happen overnight, that had to take a good 10 years to get that way. And anyway, that's the summation of the sign. And I'm frankly, I'm a little surprised it has been, you know, controversial with sign, but it kind of puts me in mind of the absurdity of, oh my God, you know, this current Supreme Court nominee threw ice at somebody in a bar 36 years ago. I mean, that's the level of seriousness I give to that concern.
Okay, well, let's, give us a little bit about yourself. You've been in the community for many years, I'd say 20 plus or more years.
Yep, yep.
And you're no stranger to politics in Camden County at all. If anything, you're a mainstay and when somebody mentions Jay Moreno, they know you've run your office many times.
Right, right.
So why is this, why is this opportunity different? And give us a little bit about yourself and your campaign platform.
Very briefly, I'm originally from Savannah, Georgia, born and raised there, lived there until I moved here on August 3rd, 1993. The reason I moved here, at that time, I had a contract with the Quarantine Division of the U.S. Public Health Service, which has since been renamed. But whenever a ship pulled, either an American flagged vessel, and there weren't very many at the time, or any commercial vessel pulled into all of the nine ports from Port Canaveral to the south, all the way north to Georgetown, South Carolina, and they needed any of a number of required health inspections that are required by the World Health Organization, I would get a phone call and I'd go racing off to inspect those ships. I was putting in about 50,000 miles a year on my car. And one day I said, you know, let me do a weighted average study on this thing, see where I'm doing most of my inspections, because they're perfectly random. And it turned out that most of them were Jacksonville and points south. So it turned out that by picking residents a little far to south, I could save a lot of miles. I knew St. Mary's because I had clients down here when I was in insurance business back in the 70s and 80s. So I decided, let me pick St. Mary's, and lo and behold, I immediately started saving about 1,200 miles a month of driving time. And I've been there ever since, I love the city and I plan to stay here. I ain't even be shopping for a cemetery plot here in Kansas. But anyway, that's how I came to be here. And at some point after oh, six, eight years, US Quarantine decided that they were no longer going to offer those services in every port on the two coasts, but only the major ports. So the income stream shrunk drastically and I had to get into other lines of work at the time. Back in Savannah, I was an insurance agent in life, health, pensions, and in the last five of 20 some odd years, I was doing multi-lines property casually and so forth. And I also did about a year as a residential real estate Realtor, and determined that wasn't really for me. But I understand where Realtors are coming from and I understand that they do in fact perform a valuable, you know, service for the community. So I've been here ever since and within, I guess about six months or so of my moving here, I was reading the Tribune, well, at that time we had two newspapers and I subscribed to both of them. And I was fascinated by the reportage on what was going on at city council meetings. So I started going there and started attending county commission meetings as well. I found it very interesting because my original of my three soon to be four college degrees had a minor in political science and I've been a C-span junkie since they came on the air and that kind of thing. So I went down there and I was absolutely shocked at what went on at the first meeting and I was moved to write a letter to the editor. And that's how I sort of became known as a public persona, whatever if you will, and have been ever since.
Okay, well, you're looking to be on the post three, you're running against the incumbent, Mr. Jim Gant, who's been, who basically have been there eight years.
Right.
So what makes this campaign different than your last campaigns? And give us four points that you plan to tackle when you're on the road.
Well, you know, oftentimes people have said, "Oh, that Moreno, he has an agenda." And it's always said in a pejorative sense of the word. I don't think that agendas are necessarily a bad thing, you know, in fact, I do have an agenda with several different benchmarks and goals and so forth. But overall, my agenda is this year to do my part to remove one-seventh of the total number of elected officials currently serving to wit Jim Gant, because he just happens to be in post three. Specifically, the reason that Jim Gant should be gone, not that they shouldn't all be gone, is that Jim Gant has frittered away God knows how many tens of thousands of dollars on his apparently personal quest for legacy in the form of the old Gilman Boathouse or the Gateway Project, as they're calling it this week. And I see no end in sight with that. I mean, the only limitation, assuming that God forbid Jim is re-elected over and over again, is his personal longevity. Because he's gonna keep at it and keep throwing money at it, even with no comers, to do this public-private partnership thing. I'm a little leery of that whole concept of public-private partnerships to begin with. I think there should be a clear line of demarcation between government entities, not-for-profit, and private enterprise entities. They should not, they should not compete against each other, nor should they get in bed together, in my humble opinion. That's just, that's just my take on the way the American capitalist system ought to work. Actually, I think that the course of action we should take is rather than keep on seeking, I mean, we'll find a unicorn down there before we find somebody that wants to come sink a bunch of their personal money into a joint development project on that property. We need to sell it. The only way it will ever be sold is if the city backs off of their current height restriction, if only by spot zoning for that particular property. Because the simple fact is, given the size of that property, unless you allow them to use more airspace than four stories essentially, it's simply not doable, it's not profitable and no businessman in his right mind would buy that property. Moreover, it has problems, as I think you and I discussed previously. Jim Goodman just recently discovered, I'm not sure where Jim found this, but he discovered a letter showing that despite Jim Gant's denials, there has in fact been a core sample taken of that property, which I've had people like Sidney Howell, who's lived here all his life, told me, he says, "Jay," he says, "All of that property was once marsh. Gilmans took, you know, refuse, bric-a-brac or whatever, from the mill and just hauled it down there and hauled it down there and packed it in until they had a place to build the boathouse." Well, you can't put even a four-story structure on that kind of a foundation without sinking God knows how many feet of reinforced concrete piles. Okay, so again, a potential buyer is gonna see that, no way in world. We need to staunch the bleeding. All I see is years more of financial bleeding on that project. They should have never bought it in the first place, they should have let Calvin, the late Calvin Lang, rest his soul, should have been allowed to buy it, instead of being scared off. But now, it's just, it's the classic case of good money after bad, we need to sell it. Let's face it, we're gonna take a bloodbath compared to what we've got in it versus what we can sell it for. But I still say that selling it at a loss now and have a finite end to this bleeding is a far better course than continuing on with this pipe drain.
Okay, and that's one of your platform points, and so I want to go a little bit deeper with that point because it is one of the topics that I wanted to discuss in depth and you already hit 90% of what I wanted to ask. But I do want to ask this, what if we can't sell the property, what is our best use for the property at that point?
Well, I said, I said years ago, after I explained in writing on some anti-social media platform, that I saw two possibilities. Either it was going to be purchased by a private developer, none of this public-private partnership business, and developed and only under the circumstances I just related, more airspace usage. Or failing that, it was going to become a public, yet another public park. And as you and I discussed before, under Georgia law, I don't know if everybody knows this, but under Georgia law, once you say to the legislature via your representative, "We would like to have this piece of property designated a park," once it's voted in as a park, that is for all eternity, you cannot un-park a park in Georgia. So that's what'll happen. And I think that that is, at this point, I think that is equi-probable with it being sold. And I think that it being a park would be perfectly satisfactory to some of the downtown merchants who frankly would hate like the dickens to see a competing hotel and bar and what have you go in there, as was the case previously.
If we did for some reason sell it to a developer, do you think that we would even be able to sell it at all with the public easement that's there?
Well, that's another consideration. No, I don't, I think that the only way that we could do that, that we could sell it, is to give up that easement and deed the whole shebang, the dock, everything, back as part of the deal so that the private buyer, private developer, gets the whole shebang. I mean, think about it, would you want to buy that property and yet the public could drive their golf carts and what have you all over the property without you having any control of it, of course you wouldn't. So that's, that's gonna have to be done.
Okay, are there any other priorities that you want to hit if you're on council? Because you already tackled what you were agreeing the Gateway Project. Are there some other priorities, because they could hit the topics there.
Right, okay, this drainage thing, it's been a real eye-opener for me because frankly, just as luck would have it, my lot right here is one of the highest lots in the city. I get like the primo rate on my flood insurance. So we, and we have, you know, huge retention ponds, good drainage system. The Lateness to Oscar wells took really good care of that in advance. But the situation out there like Crooked Root Plantation and other areas of town is just terrible. And the problem, here's what concerns me. We're now talking about forming yet another enterprise fund. And for viewers that don't know what an enterprise fund is, you have the general fund, which is the city's fund where all of your property taxes and other kinds of taxes go in there and can be allocated to whatever. An enterprise fund, a classic example is the water sewer fund. When you pay your monthly water sewer garbage bill, it goes into a sequestered fund and expenditures from that fund can only be for water sewer, et cetera. Well, we're now talking about forming a separate enterprise fund for stormwater control. Now, one thing I like about that idea is that by it being an enterprise fund, you can't take money that's paid specifically into that fund and go buy $7,000 date palm trees with it. You can only use it for drainage, thanks. But here's, here's my concern. The way it's going to work, as I understand it, is the fee that each property owner, be they commercial, residential, whatever, will pay is based upon how many square feet of impermeable surface you have on your property. I, in the case of my house, it would be the slab that we're sitting on top of plus the concrete driveway. Whatever that square footage is, plus my patio out back, would determine what my fee is, okay? Well, I'm sure that proponents of this thing would say, "Oh, that's a very progressive tax" because the wealthier you are, the bigger your house, the bigger your driveway, the more money you pay into it, whereas if you're a more modest owner, you pay less. Well, what happens if one day we're approached by Home Depot, and I gotta hope we are, and they say, "Well, wait a minute, you're gonna charge me this fee for my huge parking lot? I think we'll just go somewhere else." So I've been hearing discussions of how are we gonna deal with that part of it, you know? Well, what I, what really kills me is that here we're talking about hiring a consultant and we just love consultants in this town. I mean, when I moved here in 1993, the, every member of city council was on at least two subcommittees of city council that actually met in addition to the regular city council meetings. And they performed the functions that are now ostensibly, although not de facto, performed by all these various committees, citizens committees that we have, you know? I'd like to kind of see us trim down some of these citizens committees, evaluate whether they're really needed or not, and maybe have councils start doing a little more outside of council meetings to earn their $750 a month by forming some of these committees to deal with these things. We don't need to throw everything in the world at a consultant. But to get back to my concern with the consultancy part of this flood control drainage fund, is that they're talking about having a consultant come in and look at the status quo and look at all the filled-in ditches and everything and based on that recommend what we should do. Does it not make far more sense to go full bore and clean out all the ditches? And let's get all the existing drainage infrastructure functioning to maximum capacity and then, if we have to, call in a consultant? I mean, for all we know, if we go out there and we really go to it, like, you know, they just raised the millage rate ostensibly, 50% of that was to be used to hire more crew and so forth to do ditch work. For all we know, if we dig all the ditches deep enough and wide enough, the system that we have may in fact be adequate to the problem.
Let me ask, let me ask this for clarification. Where did this enterprise fund discussion come in? That's the first question. Then I want to ask this, how are they gonna get, how are they going to get the revenue from the consumer? Is it gonna be on a water bill? How are they going to do that?
My guess is, I haven't really heard, but my guess would be, and the most logical way to do it, would in fact be to send it out with the water bill, even though it's two entirely different funds.
So where did this discussion, because I've had a previous interview with another candidate and she has said the same thing in terms of the enterprise fund. Where is this coming from? Where is this just because of, you know, who pitched this idea?
I don't know for a fact, but I have a strong suspicion that it was Bob Nutter. And the reason I say that is because when I asked the question about some of the things I just expressed to you, when I expressed those concerns during the public speaking session, segment of the city council meeting recently, Bob Nutter said that he was present, living in Athens, I assume he was in Athens, Georgia, at the time that they instituted such a thing. And that his recollection was that there was horrific resistance to the idea at the outset. And he says, "Now, if you went up there and interviewed, you know, the man on the street, they would say, 'Oh, no, don't mess with my enterprise fund for flood control.'" They love it, they think it's the greatest thing since sliced bread. So I have, I have an idea that maybe, that maybe that's some of Bob's idea.
Okay, so there is history of some form of enterprise fund somewhere in the state that appears to be working for citizens.
Yeah, right, right, it's not something, you know, unique.
You're right, alright, and I wanted to ask that question to clarify for viewers that are listening to this, that may not understand that.
Right.
Okay.
By the way, before we leave that, I asked the question at the last city council meeting this past Monday night. And of course, you know, they had this thing, "Oh, we don't answer questions," which, I hope to change that by the way when I'm elected. Because by God, what's the point in a citizen getting up there and asking a question? It's like, they all sit, they're like, you know, what is it, the sino-eagle speak, the monkey thing? Why not just go ahead and answer it then? And my question was this, I said, "Have y'all considered, when you stand this thing up in its first year, how are you going to determine what amount of carve-out to take out of the money that is now going in via property taxes into the general fund, which is now either actually being spent on flood control or the amount that should have been spent? At any rate, they're gonna have to come to some decision as to what they're gonna carve out because I don't want to, I don't want to be getting a bill on the one hand to go into the enterprise fund and still see a millage rate on my property tax that reflects the amount that was previously allocated or should have been allocated to the same thing. I don't want to pay twice for the same thing.
Well, the city of Kingsland is doing something similar to that. They're actually, they're actually allocating aspects of their budget for complete control of flooding. I mean, they're actually, they're not creating any enterprise funds.
Right, they're doing it out of a general fund.
Right, right. So would you be opposed to that a lot?
Well, like I say, you could do it either way. The only thing that I like about the idea of doing it as an enterprise fund, as I said before, is that, you know, again, you know, one of my favorite images is the $7,000 date palm tree instead of a much, much cheaper garden variety common Georgia, South Carolina, Belvedere tree. Once it's in an enterprise fund, it can't be spent for anything other than the purpose. Whereas if you do it the other way and you raise the millage rate and you tell the people, "Oh, we're doing this for flood control."
Okay.
Well, you and I know, you can dip in there legally and take anything you can reallocate, as is done at a lot of city council meetings. They'll come up and say, "We need to shift funding from this line item over to this line item." Well, I don't want to see my flood control money that was a fraction of my millage rate all of a sudden go to a, to make an extreme example, and people say, "Oh, Jay, you're kidding about this, but so help me God." I once heard a discussion among some of our citizens about, "Wouldn't it be really neat if we could get the St. Mary's Railroad to agree to let us use a portion of their right-of-way to build a golf cart path that would enable you to go all the way from a new gate in the side of Osprey Cove, ride in the golf cart path with a cocktail in one hand and a steering wheel in the other, and ride all the way downtown across presumably a new bridge across Dark Country Creek, and ride all the way down to Gant's father on the riverfront?" Not on my dime, no.
To Gant's father, you're referring to the Gateway Project?
The Gateway Project, yeah.
Okay, well, you've hit two major topics, the Gateway Project and drainage. How would you, in the next topic, kind of links in with drainage, how would you grade our recovery efforts in, for Hurricane Irma and Matthew at this point?
Well, if, if, if one believes all the stories about, oh, you know, the only reason you're starting to see a lot of activity now after all this time is because of delays on the part of FEMA. What strikes me as highly curious that all of a sudden, starting just after the first day of qualifying week, all of a sudden we see heavy equipment down at the boat ramp. We see all sorts of things, we see that spiffy little marsh buggy thing that's going out in the marsh now and recovering everything. It caught me a cynic, but it looks to me just like the long tradition of every two years between qualifying week and election day, you see all kinds of city equipment out mowing the ditches. You don't see them using a grader for some reason, you see them mowing the cattails down which are back in two weeks. But you see a well-orchestrated flurry of activity, highly visible activity, out on the main artery. Everybody says, "Oh, wow, the city's doing a great job." My question is, where were they during the interregnum of two years, between the last election period and two years hence? I'm sorry, but you will not convince me, and that that doesn't happen because I've watched it since 1993. And I'm convinced that a lot of this FEMA stuff, because our city manager was integral to all of those meetings and on committees and what have you, I really truly believe that this stuff was coordinated and delayed so that we would have a big dog and pony show down on the waterfront right around election time. And I'm sorry that I truly believe that.
Okay, well, let's go into, I guess, what's happening now with the boat ramp. From what, from my discussions with Mr. Holman, the city manager, he was telling me that the reason why things were delayed was because they had to build it back to a standard that DNR wanted it. I guess he's correct, I would assume he's correct.
You mean a higher standard?
Right, a higher standard, right, with ADA compliance and things of that nature. And so that's what he is, that's what he has told me that appears to be the reason for the delay. They're expecting the, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a variety of dates as to when that area is gonna be open. I'm hearing December, I'm hearing late spring, so I'm hearing all kinds of things. What is your, what is your opinion of this, this new standard that they're telling the citizens? What is your opinion of that?
You mean as far as, as far as them having to, a delay being applicable to upgrades?
Correct.
I think that that sounds reasonable, it sounds believable. Because, I mean, obviously I'm a guy in a wheelchair, so I sort of keep up with that sort of thing with the Americans with Disabilities Act and so forth. So I wouldn't be surprised at all. I'm just kind of thinking like, well, what in the world would that be? Would that be a wheelchair ramp leading down into the river so you couldn't drive your amphibious wheelchair down to your boat or walk up to your...
Okay, so where do you, how would you grade our, I guess, our communications effort during hurricanes? Before Matthew, during Matthew, during Irma, and now moving forward? Where do you see that as, as it evolves?
Well, I spent, I spent both hurricanes sleeping on the fold-down bed in the back of my van at Walmart parking lot way up in North Georgia with my two dogs. I wasn't here at the time. You're talking about this thing that led to the...
Unified approach.
Yeah, yeah. I don't really have a yardstick to compare that to. I'd say that... I'd say that, uh, all, all, all things considered, given that we hadn't really had, uh, a hurricane, much less two back to back in many, many years, I'd say all things considered, uh, given the lack of recent experience in that area, they probably did a reasonably good job. I think the, particularly the tree removal and that sort of thing was, uh, was done fairly quickly with the, with the National Guard and what have you. So it, it wasn't bad. The thing with the boats, I can see where that would, that would take a long time. But again, I, I'm not entirely sanguine on, on believing that, uh, old gee, it just happened to be coincidental that all these projects actually, you know, started turning dirt, uh, after the first week of qualifying. I don't believe that at all.
Okay, well, let's go into, um, the controversial z- billing and zoning, newly proposed bill.
Oh, Lord.
Um, that has been a, that has been a serious concern, uh, for a lot of residents. Many of the incumbents that are up there now in council cite a survey, which I actually have here. They cited a survey saying that me, it was, let me go back to my numbers here. There were, the question is, here we go. What, what is your primary residence? And there, it looks like there were five hundred and forty-six people that answered this survey. And as you can see on here, uh, the green line at the top, it's green to me, is Osprey Cove. And then underneath that is downtown, and then everything else is the rest of the city.
Right, right.
So what, what the current incumbent is saying is that there was ample opportunity to get public input. But when you look at the public input recently on the newly proposed zoning codes, those public input pieces, those recorded pieces outnumber what's on here. So what is your opinion of those codes? And, and what do you think we should do with them?
Well, I think, you know, I've looked at them and I, and I was trying to think, well, there must, there must be some saving grace here. There must be at least one thing that I can find that I would say, that's not a bad idea. And, and in fact, there is one. And that is the idea that, uh, you know, some of those lots downtown, like, like the lots right directly across Osborne on the opposite side from the elementary school, some of those things are huge. I mean, they go back, you know, like two hundred and fifty feet or something. I mean, they're huge. And yet they'll have one little bitty house up on the front. Those people, particularly people that are, that are, uh, mill retirees that got aced out of their retirement, I used aced up, had another word in mind. But, uh, there's no reason in the world why they shouldn't be able to build, what are they called, ancillary housing units or something back there?
The secondary dwelling units.
Garage apartments.
Yeah, yeah.
For income. Well, that, that accomplishes two things. It accomplishes the purported goal of, uh, of, as I coined the phrase, densifying downtown, which is yet, yet another in the long string of, of purported, uh, uh, curealls for the ailments of the downtown merchants and so forth. If we could just get more people down there, you know, everything would be fine. That's not true, by the way, but they think it is. Like they think that, for God's sake, that if they build an eleven billion dollars, uh, golf cart and sidewalk going from downtown out to Crook River State Park, it's just gonna be hordes of campers on their bicycles making a, a, a mad dash to the cash register downtown. That's, that's silly. But no, I, I, I think that the, the, uh, allowing the garage apartments is a good thing. Uh, other than that, I, I can't find anything. And the thing that strikes me as really strange, oh, oh, and, and dividing lots, the large lots, uh, the, the, the division of the lots, let's say a ten thousand square foot lot and two five thousand square lots, I, I can live with that. But like, things like tiny houses, I mean, for God's sake, uh, I, I think one of the, in the original dimensions, they were talking about the minimum size was something like eight feet by, what, thirty feet? I mean, my God, my, my two car garage is over four hundred square feet, and they're talking about half of that? I mean, it's like a large doghouse, for God's sake. And the thing that concerns me is, is, and I'm sure this is the major concern of the citizens that live down there, like, like, one, you and I both know, first name starts with a V, they have a vacant lot next door, and they're scared to death what's gonna happen, what's gonna go into that lot because they've already been told that the people that have bought it are, are just sitting there chom- or champing at the bit for this whole, uh, zoning thing to pass so they can put a, a small house there.
So let me, let me clarify what you're saying so that the viewers who are listening misunderstand. What, what they're trying to do is they're trying to pepper in these small units within pre-existing, uh, housing structure, and that, and that's kind of, kind of the intermeasurable. Would, if you're elected council and you inherit these codes, if they're voted on for whatever,
Right.
I'm, I'm not sure if that will happen, but let's just say it did, and you have these codes in front of you. How, how would you change them? Would you, would you cha- take these, these quote unquote tiny houses, which they've removed from the language, but the square footage is still small?
Right, right, right.
What would you do with that?
Well, uh, I am quite confident that we're going to see three new councilmen in post one, two, and three. And I used to add that I deeply regret the circumstances responsible for Mr. Nutter not running. That's, that's a tragic situation. I wish that that were not the case. But I am convinced nonetheless that it's gonna be three new councilmen. Okay, so we've still got a situation where if, if the three of us, uh, who are, I think, all opposed to this whole zoning fiasco, if we vote or, or make a motion to just scrap the whole thing and start over, there's, there's two possibilities on the other side in post, uh, what, uh, four, five, and six. They can either hang tough and vote to keep it, in which case the mayor breaks the tie, and I, I, I see him voting with them. But what we can do, we three new guys, should be able to raise enough cane and, and stir up enough public ire and, and enough public input to the four survivors that are not voted out, it can't be until twenty twenty, that they will back off and say, okay, we, we hear you loud and clear, we're going to, we're going to scrap this thing, even if they have passed it. I, I think it's, uh, highly doubtful that they're going to actually go ahead and try to ran that down our throats before.
Okay, so mobilize the communities, one of your strengths.
Mobilize the communities.
Second thing, uh, let's say that they're there, you've got it, got it in your, in your lap. Um, what are you gonna do to change up, create freedom among, among the people that are having to live among those, those diversified, densified, small housing units? How are you going to correct that if that is in your lap?
Well, i- if, if they, if they pass it tomorrow, I'm wondering how many such units could actually, could and would actually be built between now and, and one January of twenty nineteen? Okay, probably not, not many. Because I have the faith that there are some people downtown who, assuming they have the financial wherewithal, will go to court and try to stop some of these things if it's, if it's literally next door to their house, okay? Uh, but, uh, if they get built and it was built lawfully while the thing was, you know, passed and enforced, I'm not sure there's anything that, that, that the people that had one built right next door to them could do about it. And by the way, you know, I, it, it tippedle to death to me the other day when, at one of the city council meetings, uh, they were talking about, uh, these, uh, cottage clusters. And somebody described how you would take maybe two large lots, combine them into one lot, then you build kind of a horseshoe shaped, uh, a ring of, or a U-shaped deal of these little cottage houses, you know? And, and somebody said, oh, that would be a great place for people that are coming to Cumberland, to see Cumberland Island rather than just seeing it and going back to their, to their Subaru or, or their Volkswagen Vanagon and eating a bologna sandwich and hitting the road. Maybe they would stay in these things. And, and I'm thinking, oh my God, you're describing a pre, pre I ninety-five Highway seventeen motel complex, you know, those little bitty things? And, and somebody at the day has actually said that. He said, it sounds to me like you're talking about an old Highway seventeen motel. Well, who in the world wants that next to their house downtown? So I, I hope, I hope none of that comes past. If they do pass it, I am all for just as quickly as possible rescinding the whole thing, just scrapping it, okay? And like I say, the only thing I've seen is, is the splitting of the lots, that's fine. And, and the, uh, the, uh, garage apartments or whatever out back. And strangely enough, at the last work session they had, which ran, I think, three hours? It, it were four hours, six to ten, oh my, six to ten. I was there for every minute of it. And my God, they were debating, on, on the one hand, they had some language that said, oh yeah, you can build an ancillary house in the backyard or auxiliary housing unit, I think they call it. But the roof line of said auxiliary home or house can't be any higher than the roof line, than the roof ridge line of the, of the primary house. And somebody said, wait a minute, a garage apartment by definition is going to be higher.
Uh huh.
And, and it's like, oh, we didn't think about that. And then another highlight of the evening was when they were debating whether or not we should keep the, the portion in it that says that if you, in the future, want to build a car wash, either automated or self-service car wash, that you had to locate it, let's, let's say you wanted to build one on Osborne. You couldn't orient it on your lot in such a way that as you're driving down Osborne, you would look over and look down the barrel, so to speak, of the car wash bay. You had to situate it so that a, an attractive wall was facing the main artery, and it had to have certain specified shrubbery in front of it and so forth. And I wanted so bad, if I could have stood up, I would have stood up and turned to the audience and said, show of hands, how many citizens here have ever been aesthetically traumatized by suddenly finding themselves staring down the barrel of the car wash? And, and, and somebody brought up the question, said, well, why, why was this even considered? And, and, and Dr. Jeff Adams' comment was, well, it's all about aesthetics. A lot, a lot of this whole thing is all about aesthetics. Well, come on. I mean, my God, you know, this, this is not, you know, some Erisian street scene out of a painting, for God's sake. I mean, this is real life. Who cares how the thing is oriented?
You, you make, you're bringing up some good points. I want to get to one more issue here related to the zoning and planning codes, the newly proposed ones. Miss, so far, Ms. Linda, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Linda Williams is, doesn't appear, and I haven't asked her, but when you watch her and listen to her, she does seem to be a fan so far of, of these zoning codes. One of her issues is she wants to be able to see the economic impact that these embedded smaller dwelling units have on a community. Uh, have you seen or done any research on that? That can tell you if this is even a viable zoning code for the community?
Well, you know, I watched Mrs. Williams in a due recall, ran against her in twenty sixteen successfully. But I think that she has had a, what she might call like a road to Damascus conversion experience. That old thing about, uh, as the date with the hangman nears, it, it, it focuses the mind. I think she has seen that her collusion, and frankly, I, I referred to in the past, and I still do, as quisling Williams. And those of you in the audience who don't know what quisling means, look up Q-U-I-S-L-I-N-G. It's a World War Two reference. I think that now that she has seen the, the ire of the community and sees the hand writing on the wall for her next run for office in twenty twenty, she's changing her tune a lot. As a matter of fact, at the last city council meeting just this week, I saw evidence of that in seats four, five, and six.
Right.
Okay?
I especially saw with Ms. Williams and Mr. Riley for sure.
Exactly, exactly. And, and frankly, uh, Councilman Rassie is.
Where do you, where do you think this is coming from? Because Kingsland is now considering a tiny home discussion, but they're going about it a completely different route. Savannah is going through this process, Valdosta is going through it. Where is this discussion, where do these things come from?
Well, you know, uh, I, my television set stays tuned almost twenty-four hours a day to Fox News, okay? I don't watch reality TV, but I understand that on, on one of these channels like, like the, what is it? Better Homes and Gardens or something like that, that there's actually a show every week that's dedicated to people who are nuts about tiny houses. It's, it's a theme now. It's like one of this, uh, you know, these green Yule gibbons, uh, nuts and berries eating Birkenstock Samberg wearing, eat, uh, live simply so that others may simply live type people are all into this tiny house business now. Well, if they wanna do that in the suburbs of Berkeley, knock yourselves out. But we don't need that in downtown St. Mary's. We are, for our.
From what I understand, it's just in downtown. I mean, it's, it's all in the city. And, and one area that's being, not being talked about is Sugar Mill.
Really?
Yeah. So now they may have changed the language since I've, because I kind of blacked out, if you will, from, from the boring, I'm sorry, they are boring, boring discussions of the zoning codes. But there was a possibility of those, those tiny homes or smaller homes now, as we're calling them, to be peppered among the different areas of the city.
Well, su- sugar mill, but old sugar mill is completely built out, is it not?
I, I don't know.
I mean, a lot, a lot of people think of this whole area here, it's sugar mill, it's like, old sugar mill, new sugar mill. Uh, my subdivision, if you write, if you notice as you're riding around, there's only a handful, less than a dozen lots now that are not built out. And here in the last year or so, I mean, it, the, the explosion, I mean, they've been building houses like crazy in this subdivision. And from my good friend and, and personal Realtor that handles all my real estate dealings, Nicole Reddy, she tells me that, my God, you can list a house here now and sell it in two or three days, you know? Uh, the market is red hot right now, but a market for these tiny homes, I don't, I don't know where that's coming from. I don't, I don't think it's coming from people that are certainly not native to St. Mary's.
Well, let's talk about, there's a couple of things here that, that will lead into, let's talk about economic development, uh, proposals and projects that are going on, and then let's dovetail that into taxes and fees. So if you want to squish those two together, we can.
Okay.
So economic development, um, right now, they're, the city has proposed to build, build a wharf on the old, uh, mill property there. Uh, they're looking to create some form of, they call it the Shrimp Project, which deals with the splash pad, but apparently that's on hold. But they're trying to, I guess, redesign aspects of downtown area. It seems like everything's focusing on downtown as, as, as it has been in, in many years. Um, first of all, what do you think of these current projects, number one? Okay, let's go with that one.
Okay. Uh, with regards to the, the, the redevelopment efforts that are afoot down at the old mill site, from what I've seen of those so far, it looks good. I don't have a problem with it. And, and, and the, the footprint of that project relative to the whole seven hundred and something acres is, is a relatively small portion, so we still have an awful lot more to develop. But from what I've seen of, of the, uh, presentation from the JDA director, it looks like a viable project. It was pretty good to me. And I think that it's not gonna be one of those things where we all got our hopes built up and then it crashed, like the, you know, the famous developer that ended up putting a bullet in his head. I think this will probably come to fruition. That, that thing with Mr., what was his name, Ramaguchi or something like that at New York City? I don't know if that's still, uh, uh, in the works or what. I think that sort of died on the vine. And I never was quite sure what he was really up to in the first place. Uh, this, this downtown thing, you know, I've watched this for, uh, this coming August, there'll be twenty-six years. And there's always been this presumption that we, the citizens, have some sort of moral, ethical civic duty to subsidize downtown businesses. Now, I'll patronize any business, like, like I just the other day, uh, had lunch with some of my political supporters at the, uh, what's the name of it? The Riverside Cafe, the Green Family runs it. Excellent, I love that place. If you serve me or sell me a good product at a good price, I don't care where you're located, I'll do business with you. But don't put your hand in my back pocket and tell me because you are in a certain area, I have to, uh, become your marketing agency in effect. I mean, you don't see people in, in the god awful lighted stretch from say, where Spur Forty hits, uh, forty, down to Buck Eddy's place. You don't see them sticking their hand out for money, but God knows some of those properties could use some help. But they don't ask for our help, they don't get any. And, and I just don't buy that it's my responsibility in any way, shape, or form to subsidize downtown business. I, I think we ought to have a nice walkable, uh, attractive downtown, that, that's well and good. But one of the things that's always bugged me is, you know, you, you, you hear all this stuff that, oh, we, we need money to beautify downtown St. Mary's. We need the city to plant, uh, shrubbery and, and potted plants and what have you. Just the other day, I'm riding along, and we had just gotten word of, of one of the reasons for the millage increase was that we, we needed at least fifty percent of that millage increase to, to properly handle ditch issues. Well, lo and behold, I pull up there, uh, just across the street from the, uh, visitor's center on the corner, and here's a guy, a city worker, in a, in a flatbed, uh, truck, like a Ford E maybe three fifty, with a state body on it, with a great big translucent water tank with a pump and a hose. And he's over there watering a tiny potted plant, city owned, sitting atop the famous stump of the Washington Oak. And I'm thinking, wait a minute, they got this guy running around downtown watering potted plants? Couldn't he park that truck, for God's sake, and go out there with a crew to the, for people out there in, in the current river plantations that are flooding all the time? Let's, let's let, maybe the city, maybe some of the city merchants could get together on a Saturday and wa- water the plants for a while until we get something else done. The, the priorities are just totally out of whack in this town. And, and let's face it, he who has the, the political clout, as demonstrated by turnout rates, is the one that gets the most attention. Let's, let me talk about that for just a minute. Because as somebody who's run for office as you have, and I'm sure. and I'm sure that like any other bright person, which you certainly are, are running for office, one of the first things you want to do is go get the printout or, or mail on a disk of the voter rolls, voter registration rolls. And for those in the audience who don't realize this, those rolls contain a wealth of information. Like if I've looked, if I'm looking on the, I see Jeremy Spencer. It tells me the date that you registered. It tells me every time you voted in every election since then, whether you have or have not voted incidentally. And in, in like presidential primaries or, or party primaries where you have to declare, "I'm a Democrat or Republican," or whatever, it shows me whether you're a Republican or Republican. There's a wealth of information in there. And something else that's very telling is if you wait about two weeks after the election, you call up to the courthouse and talk to Penny Miller up there, she will gladly send you a breakdown of the turnout at each precinct. And let me tell you how that goes. And I know I'm precinct prior, I'm sure you know this. The turnout at the, uh, West St. Mary's precinct, which, let's cut the chase, that's Osprey Cove, is consistently, whether it's a presidential election year or not, is consistently north of 50%. It's in the low 50% range. The turn, the next highest turnout is downtown, 40%, okay? Who are the two precincts that get the most grease as far as expenditure on wants versus needs? It's those two. And while I'm on it, let, let me finish the other ones. The, uh, where I live here, where we vote down at Merrily Clark Elementary, where you vote as well, gets about 25% turnout. That's, that's of the total registered voters who voted at that polling station. Only 25% turnout. It goes downhill from there. Out in the area where Rob Moore is doing such a great job stirring up people about their ditch problem out there, their turnout rate is usually around 23%, okay? And then the mid, the, the midtown district, which is basically, uh, you know, like from, say, uh, Hardee's on down to Buck Eddy's Place and then back towards the river, but those newer houses in there, their turnout rate barely hits 20%, okay? And here's the kicker, if you look at the raw numbers of voters in each, uh, precinct and you total them up, those of us who live outside the gates of Osprey Cove, and for that matter, to a much lesser degree, you come from Harbor, far outnumber the people in the gated communities. But they, they beat us every time on turnout, because we just don't turn, we could swap them if every one of the other four precincts turned out at even 30%. We'd swap them. But we don't. And then, then we all bitch about, "Oh, we're not getting this done and we're not getting that done and we're getting ignored." Well, if we're not a politi-, and that's another thing, if we're not a political threat, then we don't, we don't get attended to. And the reason, one of the primary reasons why that works is the fact that we have an at-large election system. Where if I'm elected at large and one guy from one neighborhood calls and complains about something, and I know that I could ignore his complaint, because all the folks out there in, in Osprey Cove will reelect me if I'm doing them right by their, by their, uh, standards, then I have, I can ignore everyone else. But if we go to districts, that, that can't happen. Because if Jay Marino calls up his designated district representative and I'm raising hell about something that's not being, like, there's a pothole out here, uh, on the access road and it's not being handled, then all the people that keep hitting that pothole can look to that one representative and put his feet to the fire. Whereas now, we have no power whatsoever. That's like the people out there in, in, uh, in, uh, Crook River Plantation. They can complain till they're blue in their face, till their water's up to their necks. Does it do them any good? No, because they have no clout. They're not a threat.
I want to, I want to hit that a little bit more. I want to go back to economic development for a second.
Okay.
Because you're right, the, the voting has aligned with that.
Right.
It's all connected.
Right.
Um, where do you see the economic development in St. Mary's? Where is it and where is it going in the future? And are we planning for that?
Uh, go back to the night that the county commission several years ago reluctantly, kicking and screaming, voted in a one-mill increase and dedicated it to the Joint Development Authority. I was there that night and I was one of a handful of people, including Charlie Smith, who got up and spoke to that issue. And I spoke in favor of it. And the comment that I made at that time, I said, "Mark my words, people. We are going to see a Republican president in the White House come this next election." I had no idea it would be Donald Trump. Nobody did. And I said, "What you're going to see is a, a, a dam burst, because all of these corporations under Obama are scared to death to make major capital expenditures, because they have no idea what Obama's going to do to them, tax-wise and regulation-wise." Well, sure enough, my prediction came true. And what I told them, I said, "Look, during the interregnum between now and when a Republican takes the White House, and hopefully we take both houses, which we did, secret, our republic." But at any rate, uh, I said, "What we need to do, if we don't do anything else, is we need to prep the ground. We need to plow the field. We need to have everything ready, because it's going to be a dam burst of expansion. And they're going to be looking to the sunny south, and we need to be ready. And we need to have a good story as to how we're located, roughly equidistant between the huge Fort of Jacksonville and the west of Fort of Brunswick and, and our rail connections and our interstate act. We need to have all that out there." Did we do that adequately? No, I don't think so. And as a result, the dam has burst and all kinds of other communities are, are getting, you know, like, like in ancient Egypt, you know, the mallow would flood and the silt would come in and the crops would grow. We missed the flood, or the beginning of the flood. It's not, it's not too late, but we're not doing a very good job. And quite frankly, uh, I think that we're now reaching the point where with regards to J D A, if we don't see some results here pretty soon, we need to start looking for new leadership up there. Okay? Now, as, as to St. Mary's per se, you know, I, I don't know what it is, but, uh, this whole county, much less St. Mary's, has had a, a really weird history in terms of one industry coming here. I found out from Wyman Westbury, who's, who's a wealth of, Wyman Westbury, for those who don't know, is the owner, uh, still owns all the properties well his mom and pop stores used to be located. Uh, Wyman told me, and, and I've subsequently verified this, years ago, the, the Budweiser Brewery that now sits down in Jacksonville, you know where they wanted to put that originally? On the river, on the Satella River in Woodbine. And the people said, "We don't want that kind of thing in our community." So, they went on. At one point, I understand, I gained from, from Wyman, and I've confirmed this with other people, uh, back during the Brandon administration, Mayor Jerry Brandon, there was an Israeli firm that wanted to come over here and build planes that were roughly, uh, competition to, say, Piper Cups. And for some reason, they were told, "No, we, we, we don't really want that in our community." You know, so it, it's not...
We're kind of getting the same, same, almost the same atmosphere with the spaceport. It almost...
Exactly, exactly. And, and I, 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 you know, I see all these, I see all these, uh, spaceport obsessed people that just the moment that they're one month away, or whatever it is, to go into the T and G, they've got a new, uh, husband-wife letter combo in there, uh, with all kinds of statistics and so forth. I will say this, I don't want to see us put all of our eggs in that basket, but the potential is, is sufficient enough that it's well worth putting a good bit of effort into it, you know? But on the other hand, we don't need to be so focused on that that we miss other opportunities. And something that's always occurred to me is, because, you know, I used to inspect ships all over the place, uh, Brunswick has a nice deep-water port with a, with a very short run from the ocean to the docks, one of the shortest on the east coast. Unfortunately, they don't have the land that they need. It, it would be great if we could stop worrying about using that railroad track that used to run along seven, side 17 and go up that way, uh, maybe rebuild the bridge, stop using it as bicycle path and see if we can't sell the idea that, "Hey, we've got all kinds of land down here in Camden County where we could have, I never ever said why we haven't capitalized on having, uh, transmodal shipment warehouses and stuff, where you could have a, a, a container vessel come into Jacksonville and haul that cargo and containers up to warehouses up here in Camden County, like particularly west, west of Kingsland. There's all kinds of pine land out there that's perfectly suitable for that kind of thing. It's no longer, you know, there's no point in raising pine trees with the mill closed. Uh, the, you know, you could, you could break them down and pack them and load them and what have you. Uh, this would be a trucking company's dream up here. We've never done that. We, we've just never capitalized. We, we, we've listed in our, uh, website for the J D A that we have all this, uh, access to interstates and railroads and blah, blah, blah. But nobody's ever taken advantage of it. I think, I hate to say this, but I don't think we're spending enough money on, on J D A efforts. But before I would favor spending another dime as far as a tax increase for that purpose, I think we need, I, I, I don't think I know. We need to hire someone to run that operation that has a proven track record of actually running a successful J D A, that has in fact recruited businesses to their, to their community. And it may be...
I think one of the things you've hit upon is, is community wants and versus what they really want. I think, you know, that, you know, hearing you discuss, I mean, we have to balance what the community really wants. They say they want an issue, but what do they really want? Versus hiring people that can actually get things here. I think that's our, I think you highlighted that. That's our challenge in Camden County and St. Mary's.
You, you've got extremes. Like the other night at the council meeting, Jim Gant was adamant that, "Oh, no, no, we should never, ever countenance any heavy industry again, and certainly not in St. Mary's and maybe not in the county." Well, seriously, but, I mean, we've got all kind of land between, uh, the western, uh, city limits of Kingsland and when you get over into Charlton County, that you could have all kind of heavy, not necessarily polluting industry over there. It wouldn't hurt a thing in the world. I mean, you've, you've got these extremes, like, like remember for God's sake when Alex Kearns ran off the company that, uh, I forget what they were called, uh, ni- niocine or, or hyocine hold, niocine holdings or something?
Yeah, yeah.
And the idea was that they were going to suck in some passing water from the St. Mary's River, extract the tannins, which apparently are very valuable as an additive to fertilizers. And I remember I told you about this, uh, she said, "Oh, my God, it's going to change the pH level downstream. It's going to raise the water temperature by one degree." Well, I've got a friend of mine that graduated from V C, Benedictum Military High School in Savannah with me in 1965, Harry Ju, J U E, Chinese-American. He went on, uh, to get a degree in, in chemistry and biochemistry and whatever, and, uh, worked for D and R for a while. Then he was the head of the water sewer treatment business for the whole city of Savannah, now works for an engineering firm, still working at 71. Travels all over the world consulting with like Saudi princes and what have you on their sewer systems and everything. The guy really knows his stuff. And I told, I told him the story. I said, "Okay, they want to suck this water out, suck out some tannins and it's going to change the water." I said, "What, what's the big deal, Harry?" He says, "Oh, my God." He says, "Jay, depending on the rain level, the tannin levels in, in the St. Mary's River are going to change on a daily basis. The pH is going to change slightly on a daily basis. And depending on whether it's a cloudy day or not, the temperature's going to change by one degree." And yet, this community allowed a, a, a green activist to run those people off. I mean, it wasn't a big deal. It was like two employees or something. But I, I, I certainly believe that no matter what it is that wants to come in here, we're going to get...
I think we're seeing that with other industries here, such as the spaceport. We're seeing some pushback from that.
Exactly.
Now, rightly, now, I, I will say there, there is a, there is some legitimate pushback. And one of the legitimate issues is that the corporation that did the rocket launch analysis, debris analysis, is that information, because it's, they're saying it's proprietary information. That information was shown to the county commissioners, but the public is not allowed to see that information. So, that's where the pushback is coming from. It's like, "Well, you showed our county commissioners. If it's good enough for the elected officials, why can't it be good enough for us?" I understand, I, I understand where that pushback is coming from. But you, you hit a, you've hit a, you've hit a nail on the head in terms of what really people really want in jobs and what they really think about, real jobs.
Yeah. And, and you know, the, the lack, the lack of jobs that will provide a wage with which a man, a woman, in, in childbearing years could raise a family, has a very major impact on the demographic shift that I'm seeing in this city. We're, you know, they refer to the area around St. Petersburg, Florida as God's little waiting room, because of all the elderly people that have moved there. Uh, well, you know, we're, we're seeing a demographic shift. And I know this because when I was getting my undergraduate degree in public management and then went on to get an M P A in, from, uh, Valdosta in, uh, in, uh, on the city manage, city-county management track, but in the, in the bachelor's program at Coastal, I was part of a study that was being done by my major professor. It was part of this Obama, uh, Obamacare business where they mandated, I think you and I talked about this, where they mandated that you had to do a survey of every county in the country as to what their unmet medical needs were. And, and we got a good look at the demographic shift. And Camden County, and St. Mary's in particular, is getting grayer and grayer and grayer. And the only, uh, not the only, but the vast majority of the people that are raising families and have children in our schools and so forth are active-duty military, okay? The, 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 the cadre of a cohort of people that would be naturally the children of, of longtime residents here, and they would end up staying here so that you had a, 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 a normal Norman Rockwellian mix of population, you know, the, the right proportion of, of grandmas and grandbads and, and parents and children. We don't have that. And we're, and we're slipping away to where we're getting grayer and grayer and grayer. And the only people that, that are not retired corporate executives, professionals, whatever, that, and, and are not active-duty military that are going to end up staying here is just enough people to mow certain folks' lawns and bag their groceries at Publix and maybe fix their air conditioner or their plumbing. Other than that, or, or working for, uh, government, county or city or federal, where are the jobs? There, there are no jobs here. I mean, there's like, there's like flipping burgers or there's working at the base. But where, where are the jobs that, that somebody can, can hang their hat on?
Let's go to the taxes and fees. And, um, just quickly, uh, they, they, they increased our taxes and they, they justified it for increasing communications with fire and police, um, public works. Um, if you were on council, would you have voted for that tax increase? If, if so, why? If not, why? Give us, give us your philosophy on taxes.
Well, if, if I were on council, and let's say that the, the necessity of a tax increase, specifically this past one, did not really reach a critical juncture until after I was sworn in, I would look back and see how it came to pass. Well, I know how it came to pass. You know how it came to pass. Uh, all, all elected bodies, uh, do this, at least in my experience in this county, be it the, be it the county or the city. What they'll do is for political purposes, for, for the benefit of their incumbency, you know, they will put off a needed tax increase for just as long as they possibly can, knowing full well that they should have been doing incremental increases, small incremental increases yearly all along, if in fact, you know, the needs were such that those were justified. But what they'll do is they will raid the reserves, the contingency reserves in the general fund until they just simply cannot do that anymore. Because, you know, the recommendation is that at a minimum, that you, in your, in the reserves, so to speak, it's not really a sequestered amount, it's called reserves, but you always want to have above and beyond your current operating expenses, you want to have enough of a cushion so that you could carry on if you've got no more income tax, uh, uh, no more property tax receipts for four months. That's kind of the standard. Uh, well, they keep putting it off until they get down to where they're like down to two months, a month and a half, and you go, "Oh, my God, we, we put it off for our political benefit as long as we can. Now we've got to do it." Okay? And that's what's just happened. That's, that's not all that stuff about, "Oh, well, it's, you know, because of this, uh, big, uh, uh, fairly recent upheaval about, oh, my God, the, the drainage problems." That's kind of a covered story. This stuff has been going on for a long time. Uh, another thing that bothers me about these people is they don't, they don't seem to have a program in place, an analytical program, which is, I mean, there are all sorts of off-the-shelf software programs now where you can look and see, uh, if you, if you have X amount of rolling stock and some of it's like bat hose, some of it's track hose, whatever, you can project into the future what the longevity of that vehicle or that piece of equipment, assuming you do routine maintenance. And you can plan ahead as to what you need to set aside at the way of a sinking fund to replace that equipment. We don't seem to have that. Like, uh, I made the comment, uh, a friend of, a friend of mine named Tommy Weaver, you know, Tommy ran for office one time. Tommy's since moved out of town. But Tommy and I had this long-running friendly argument on, on Facebook about Tommy was held bent that we should take 100% of the SPOSS funds and allocate it towards paying down the water sewer debt. and allocate it towards paying down the water sewer debt. And I said, no, Tommy, you can't do that because if you do that, what will happen is things, other capital needs and 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 things that are going to wear out, that you should allocate SPOSS funds to, it's going to come back and bite you in the arse in the form of of a need for increased property tax fees. And that happened not too long ago, I think it was a year or two ago, if you recall. All of a sudden, Robbie Horton informs us, you know, we've got two or three firemen that are just, I mean, they're just not worth putting any more money into, we need to sell these puppies and buy two or three new ones. And as a result, we had to have a slight millage increase then, if you recall. Well, if they had been doing this this, these analytical programs, I I forget the, I forget the term that describes that process, but it's a whole.
Basically, you what you're for is forecasting and projecting.
Forecasting, right.
What needs to be done where taxes are concerned, incremental incremental increases if needed.
If needed, right. And and don't don't be politically gutless and say, well, you know, God, if I can just, if I can just, I I'm running, I'm running this year. God, if we could just, guys, you guys, my my pals here, you're not running this time. For God's sake, don't do a raiding, don't do a millage increase, you'll kill me. And they say, okay, fine. And then two years later, it's the other side of the day, saying, oh, God, don't do that, I'm running this year. And and it finally gets to the point where they just can't avoid it, that's what just happened, okay?
Um, let's go into authorities and boards. Um, particularly, let's focus in on the public service authority and the hospital authority. Let's let's hit the public service authority, uh financial fallout. The city of Saint Mary's had forecasted two hundred thirty seven thousand and possibly more.
Yeah.
Um, the county's renegotiated the tax liens to, from one point five million down to five hundred thousand. Um, it looks like the new director that's there seems to have a, had a clue, he does, interviewing. Um, it looks like things are starting to roll slowly in the right direction. Um, what is your opinion of that entire situation? And what do you think needs to happen with the current agreement between the P S A and the city and the county?
Well, from what I understand, mayoral attendance at these uh meetings of the of the board that was supposed to be watching all this stuff was spotty at best. Sometimes they, in fact, I've even heard more often than not, they wouldn't even have quorum at these meetings.
Not the last one, there was only three, yeah.
Yeah. And and what they did at these meetings, uh, I have no clue because they obviously weren't looking very closely at financials. I mean, I mean, that's obvious. I think that probably they need to take it in-house into the county. Let the county finance director, county auditors and so forth fill that role. Obviously, the mayoral council or whatever, what was it, compliance?
It was three there, the two county commissioners.
Right, right. That that didn't cut it. I mean, we need somebody that works numbers in finance day in and day out. Because with the exception of, I don't know, Bill Lowey had a career as an accountant, but uh.
And he was on the board.
And and he was on board, yeah. During the time that the guy was merrily stealing, we don't know how much money, it could it could go over a million, we gotta say, probably, you know. You know, we do, really don't know. No, there there's no excuse for that to have happened, absolutely no excuse whatsoever. And I think that the way they're uh monitoring it now is it clearly did not work. And I see no reason to expect that it will work in the future. It needs to be turned over to the county and have the finance uh director and somebody there keeping an eagle's eye on this thing, absolutely. And your other question was.
Was the uh dealing with, if, the current agreement needs some work. Right now, the current agreement for the funding of the P S A says that it has to be based on tax digest. However, however, they've not done that, all the cities have blindly written the check based on population formula. Last week, they had a special meeting to discuss whether they want to do population or whether they want to continue to digest. Every county, every city in the county, I should say, every city except Kingsland donated their portion this time of the seven hundred thousand dollar bailout in population formula. The only city that didn't do that was Kingsland because they they wanted to stay with the agreement. So now what has to happen is they all have to come and do a super work session to figure out, do they want to stick with tax digest or do they want? You know, what is your opinion of how that should be funded? Is should it be tax digest or should it be based on population formula or something completely different?
Well, on the one hand, you could argue that based on the population formula and and assuming that a roughly equal percentage of any given population utilizes the facilities, you could say, well, that's justification for using that approach. But I think frankly, that the tax digest idea is is the better way to go. I mean, it makes more, it makes more mathematical economic uh accounting type sense to me to to go that route. But one of the problems we've had in in this county in the tw- almost twenty six years I've been here, or creeping up on twenty six, is that for years, at both the county and city level, particularly the city of Saint Mary's when I arrived, the official code of Georgia annotated was viewed as a collection of optional suggestions, you know. It you didn't really, you, it was like a Chinese menu, you could pick a row from column A and a row from column B, but you weren't really high bound to abide by the letter of the O C G A on almost any area. I mean, witness the, you know, the the stuff that I discovered was going on in the Brandon administration and that was, you know, all in the news and that's old history. But uh culminating with with Mayor Brandon and and several councilmen calling a news conference with all the television stations and saying that if in fact they violated the law, which they had, then the law isn't asked. That was that was the attitude, like, hey, you know, the law's an ask, that's how we've always done it in Saint Mary's, even if it's illegal. But it was, what was the other uh question to the P S A and what?
And and going into the hospital authority.
Oh, the hospital authority.
Because because, you know, they they had this issue not having audits, much like the P S A.
Yeah.
That's why we're in the situation we're in with P S A. So what, to 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 kind of frame the question around the hospital authority, so that we we kind of condense this here, there's a lot of friction between the hospital authority and the city. And now now there's issues dealing with expenditures and a lot of that has to go back to the history of the audits and how things weren't done. What is your entire opinion of that entire relationship? And can it ever be fixed?
Well, I was shocked, genuinely shocked, not much shocks me in in government in this county and city anymore. But the night that uh I realized that it appeared to be quite true that the entire council, including Bob Nutter, that was the most striking one, was not aware of the fact that when you stand up, when a when a city or county goes to their state representative and says, take this bill to the legislature, I want you to stand up authority whatever in my community. Once that is approved and it becomes a state authority, state authorized authority, it enjoys what I call eternal life. It 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 is an entity unto itself, even though it was created by the city or the county, it then has all sorts of powers, in some cases even powers to tax, okay? And just because uh there comes a point when the city that created said authority is P O'd at said authority and wants to kill it, can't be done, it can't be done. Literally, the only way that you can kill authority, well, you can almost kill it by, if you're the city and you're providing all the funding, you could starve it to death. But even though it's deathly thin, it will not die until such time as, believe it or not, a majority of the members of the of the authority, they themselves vote to disband themselves, then it can be done. Otherwise, you can't disband the authority. So this idea, like like people writing in on antisocial media saying, my God, why isn't the city doing something? The city can't do anything, that's what the attorney told them, it's an authority, okay? Well, but to get to the rest of the question, what do we do about it? You know, I I'm beginning to think that maybe what ought to happen is just go ahead and turn the running of the thing over to the hospital authority, lock, stock and barrel.
Talking about the senior center.
Get the city out of it. The senior center, right, the senior center. Get, and and that's the, that's the raison d'etre for the, what is it? One of the calls is the hospital authority doing business as a senior center authority or whatever. Uh, it, you know, you you can't have this Frankenstein's monster uh arrangement here. It either needs to be all city or all hospital authority. And I think given that the hospital authority are the guys with three point seven million dollars.
Well, a lot of people who are savvy in their understanding of operations of government have said it needs to either go under the city or it needs to go under the, one or the other.
Okay. And 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 poor Rendi Howell, God bless her, uh, she's caught in a, in a, in a just god awful untenable position over there because she's run that thing for eighteen years. Uh, she's done a good job of it, the the patrons love her to death. And here she's in a position where she's now been told that she can't have any communications whatsoever with the hospital authority, that she can't call the.
For what, for what I'm being told, she can now honor request funding for certain programs. That's what I've been told. So she cannot, no longer be asked, she can't go and say, hey, I need thirty thousand dollars for the free program initiative.
So she has to go via John Hohman.
With Mr. Hohman by way of Donna Larson, who's the human resources director, which is an odd organizational structure within the city of Saint Mary's. So that's what she is is having a heartburn about at the moment. And now the hospital authority is having a heartburn with the city saying, well, you're telling us that we have to fill out these forms to justify expenditure because they've never had audits. So you've got, we've got past history of noncompliance with audits. And we have a a situation where now the, we handcuff the coordinator who runs the thing day to day. So like you're saying, either he has to go here or it has to be here.
Well, you know, I I I've heard a lot of people say these wild tales, but oh, the the people on the hospital authority are having lavish dinners and cocktail parties and all for the funding. I I I don't really think that's true. I think that all those people are well intentioned, although God knows, there's been no turnover on that board of any consequence for years. I don't think anybody's skimming money or whatever. Their their feeling has been, look, you know, we only earned X amount of interest off of this essentially uh endowment, so to speak, uh, a year, and it's a crying shame if we have to throw away ten thousand dollars over an audit when we're all doing a wonderful job of, you know, growing it, knowing it. Nonetheless, state law is state law, they and they have to do one. I mean, whether like or not, I mean, it's got to be done. But here's the thing, now we have a situation where the city is kicking in some of the funding. The the uh uh hospital authority is kicking in, what is it, two thirds of whatever their earnings are on their investment every year and they keep the other third to keep it growing, very sensible. But if you turn it over a hundred percent to the hospital authority for funding and you make Rendi an employee of the hospital authority with exactly or even maybe better benefits than she has with the city, then on their own, based on their earnings on the endowment, they're not going to be able to fund the whole inch lot. So what you would have if the if the hospital authority takes it over and and takes over Rendi as an employee and she gets, you know, essentially all of her vesting transferred over, that could be done, then the city, whereas now the 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 hospital authority is writing a check to the city, now it would be the city writing a check back to the hospital authority. And I I see no reason why that won't work, I mean, it's the same money, it's just traveling in different directions now. And and you've got uh sent, uh, Rendi and all her employees answered to one boss.
What do you think about the the task force uh that has been put in place to help uh increase the variety of programs that's offered at the Saint Mary's Senior Center? The, the chairwoman, Ms. Tanya Glazberg, has said that they're trying to prepare the senior center for the future, future and provide a diverse diversity of programs. What is your opinion about that task force's responsibility and purpose?
Well, I think the original intent, now probably gets a lot of flack for this, but you will never convince me that the city was not just drooling over the prospect of getting their hands on the three point whatever million dollars, okay, to do, God knows what would have happened to that money if it had gone into the general fund. It it probably would have ended up, you know, in golf cart heaven, a golf cart have heaven somewhere. But the the whole thing about the about the uh, the the, I call it the R A S I commission or the task force, uh, they were trying to fix a problem that really didn't exist but for the fact that there's four specific individuals that attend the uh uh senior center functions that for whatever reason are are highly dissatisfied with everything over there and they're constantly causing problems. If if you watch the video of the last city council meeting where Rendi got up there and testified and then her husband, uh, former uh city councilman Sidney Howell got up there and really kind of lost his cool, but I can understand why he did. Uh, that is the, you know, in medical, and I know you're a medical guy, uh, there is a a nidus of disease over there. And if that if that nidus could be surgically excised legally, constitutionally and consistent with the Fourteenth Amendment, that whole problem would have never existed or it would have gone away by now, the patient would have been fully healed. The, I am for disbanding that uh R A S I commission, hope's haste, okay? And one of the things that strikes me as so ironic is they're talking about, well, you know, we we don't have enough seniors participating over there. It kind of puts me in mind of when Obama was was trying his level best and telling what great success he was having in greatly expanding the number of Americans that were on food stamps or SNAP, as they call it now. Wait a minute, we should be celebrating an increased number of Americans on SNAP and we should also be celebrating the fact that we have more rather than less senior citizens that don't have a family, a living spouse, uh, children that they can live with and socialize with, that their only source of socialization and perhaps one good hot meal a day is at the senior center. We should be celebrating an increase in the number of people that desperately need what the civics, well, I mean, what the senior center offers? I don't think so. You follow where I'm going with that? I I just, I just, I mean, I'm not saying that, you know, all those poor pathetic people at the senior center, but but the simple fact is, hell, I'll be seventy one in November, but I don't need a senior center.
I've attended several hospital authority meetings and it seems, the hospital authority, I generally believe they want to have a conversation with the task force, but that hasn't.
Oh, I absolutely do.
It hasn't happened. Uh, the task force is is still asking for more information from the coordinator, Ms. Howell. Um, to, it's obvious that they're going to need the hospital authority to help fund some of these future expansions that I think could be beneficial to the seniors, it could be.
Right.
But we don't know. Um, so I guess my question is, you know, if you were, I guess, head of the R A S I commission, which is what you're calling it, if if you're head of the R A S I commission, how do you get the, how do you get the task force to talk with hospital authority? What would you do as councilman, Jay Murray?
Well, you know, there there's so, there's so much animosity there now between, and and not just the animosity between, you know, like Rendi supporters and Rendi detractors and all, like like we saw manifest itself to the point that the mayor had to step in and and did a, I thought a really good.
Well, it shouldn't have ever went that far.
Should it, should it never have gone. But but there's so much has happened now, and I've been present and you were sitting right beside me at some of those meetings where uh Tanya Glazberg and and double agent Jay Lassiter, who strangely enough was both on the R A S I commission and on the hospital authority at the same time, which I I thought was very strange. Uh, you and I both know that members of the hospital authority board pleaded, for God's sake, let's have a joint meeting of of the of the committee of the whole, of the, every member of the R A S I commission sitting in the same room with every. Oh, no.
When we're going on nine.
Tanya Glazberg would not have.
But how, but you're head of the R A S I commission, or now we'll call it the Marino Commission for context. You're head of the Marino Commission. What are you going to do to get those to talk to them? Because at this point, it doesn't look like it's going to happen. It's nine months later and where is the conversation that needs to happen?
The first thing I do was was call for a vote to disband the Marino Commission, if you would have. Okay, because I don't think it ever should have been stood up in the first place. Uh, I I don't, I don't trust what their goals were to begin with. And let let me just say this bluntly, I I I've said this one time in an open council session and some of the senior uh center patrons not really waiting to see where I was going with this booed and hissed and carried on. You know, I was born and raised in Savannah, Georgia, and the simple fact is that in spite of all the racial uh uh progress that we've made over the decades since the fifties and the and the whole civil rights movement and all that, it is still a a rather commonly held belief, I I think, of people from the northeast United States that all of us in the South are at heart racist if if we're white, okay? That's not the case anymore, was it one time? Well, never really was, but more so now. And it strikes me that part of the concern about the Saint Mary's Senior Center is that the only black person I've ever seen over there, and I was assured that wasn't the case, but in my, in my very few visits over there, was the lady helping serve the lunch, okay? There there aren't a whole lot of members over there. They seem to all be clustered up in the other one that's federally funded up up in Woodline. Uh, I think that that is not. I think that that is not, it is, I don't think it's like, you know, the, the, the patrons over there, uh, you know, came in there one day wearing Klan robes and ran all the black folks out. I, I think they're perfectly welcome there. It's just a natural human tendency. And, and I have the faith that anybody that walked in there right now that was of any other, uh, 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 race than Caucasian would be perfectly welcome, and would be perfectly, you know, happy over there. So that's an issue that I think was being sort of addressed, uh, by some of the folks on this commission that are from parts north of us, that, that really wasn't ever an issue to begin with.
Okay, so you're saying that some, some folks from, that have northeastern origins, they're creating an issue of race and it's not there? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I think they perceive that the reason it's so lily-white over there might be because of racism. I don't believe it is, okay?
I don't think it is.
I don't, I don't think it is at all.
I think it's a lack of trying to get that.
And, and this thing about, oh, we've got to have more programs, well, excuse me. When I've been over there and I watch the ladies, many of whom are widows of mill workers who have since passed on, and as we all know, they got screwed out of their pensions by that Mexican company that came in, a lot of those folks are probably very happy to get that new day meal, you know, that's well nourishing and the kind of food we sellers like to eat. They, if they, if they are perfectly happy sitting around doing whatever, uh, uh, huzzles or checkers or whatever, why in God's name should we go over and say, hey, you ladies need to get up and start doing aerobic exercises or, or shuffleboard or badminton? Whatever they're happy with, let them do it. If, 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 if you say, hey, how would you guys like a, a shuffleboard? And they say, oh, God, yeah, right, okay, give them one. But this, I, I don't see that there was any clamoring over there for expanded programs. And that seems to me like, like, oh, we did a study of, of all these other, uh, programs all over the country. They have this and they have that. Well, okay, fine. But we don't have that, and the people there seem to be perfectly happy.
It's going to take more resources to expand what they're...
Exactly.
Okay, last, last topic and then we'll close. You already hit, it was on districts, quickly. Why are you for districts, uh, voting districts?
Districts are the only conceivable way that we can stop the situation that we've seen develop over the last ten years and ensure that it never comes back, okay? Districts are the stake that we need to drive through the heart of the problem to stop it permanently in the future, okay? Because just like I said, it, it, it's a, it's a twin problem. It's that because the, the, the demographics of the West St. Mary's, uh, precinct, and it tickles me, by the way, that, uh, you know, the residents of Osprey Cove now have suddenly taken to saying, oh, when asked, well, where do you live? They'll say, if they sense that it's not one of their peers that's asking the question. Rather than saying, oh, I live in Osprey Cove, they'll say, oh, I live in West St. Mary's. You know, because I think they're entirely cognizant of the fact that the rest of us are getting a little tired of their hegemony over our, uh, uh, over our local government. But the problem is, as long as they have that huge voter turnout, and they haven't built out Osprey Cove yet, there's still lots over there to, uh, plenty to be built on. They're up to, what, like, four hundred houses now? Put two, two people in each house or more with a fifty percent voter turnout rate. And, and by the way, I predict that November sixth is coming. We're going to see a record-setting turnout, not only from there and everybody, everybody that lives in the other four saying, hey, then we're going to have a great turnout this time. But beware, don't get too confident and cocky, because their turnout is also going to be high. Because they realize what, what is at stake here. If we sweep clean all three of these seats and then go on to sweep out the remaining four in 2020, which is one of my objectives, I, I will work with absolute comity, with the four committees, C-O-M-I-T-Y, with the four survivors on any legitimate issue where we're discussing funding of, or legislation, uh, that involves a legitimate need that is a legitimate city function. But between now and 2020, when I hope to see the rest of them voted out, as soon as they raise the specter of, oh, let's do another need program, or even let's continue funding the ones that are in progress that are not working, like Gant's folly down there, I'll, I'll fight like hell to raise public awareness and, 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 and public protest against that, okay? But getting back to why I, why I think districts are the cure, so long as they have that kind of turnout and they're getting bigger and bigger, and now that they've got approval for the Marina out here at, uh, at Cumberland Harbor, that's going to start building out. And when you get the, the peer, uh, uh, camaraderie of those two gated communities and they both start voting at fifty percent plus turnout, and we don't have districts, they will own and operate our city government for all eternity unless we stop them now. And the only way to do it is to go to districts. Think about this, under districts, every district will only have one representative. Totally account, one councilman, totally accountable to you in, in that district, but also responsible for doing their, their duty with regards to the whole city. Now, the mayor, under the scenario that, uh, envisioned, will always be elected at large, which means that we will always have a John Morrissey or some, or some counterpart for one of those two communities will always be our mayor, that's just, uh, but fortunately, we have, under the, under the allowable Georgia forms of government, we have a weak mayor, city manager form. And by the way, that reminds me, I don't think it's come to pass yet, but you do recall that, uh, the council decided it would be perfectly okay for the mayor to hire a special mayoral assistant who would only answer directly to the mayor and not to the city manager.
That's been put on hold, and I asked the question, why is that on hold? And, uh, I think they're still trying to recruit somebody, I could be wrong, but it's on hold because they kept getting assistant city manager application, type of applications. And what Mayor Morrissey wants is he wants somebody with a heavy engineer background.
Right. Well, I don't see a stop put to that, because it's a contravention of what our charter calls for. We are chartered as a weak mayor, city manager, uh, and you could, you could infer a strong city manager form of government. And we don't need a semi-weak mayor, a, a strengthened mayor, strengthened by having his own guy that answers only him. I, I, I'm a little concerned about that. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Well, let's close, and our interview's been extremely great, we've had a great discussion. Uh, all the candidates that I have, have interviewed, have, we've had rich discussions and you're right there with them.
Right.
Um, so what would you say to the voters of St. Mary's, um, in your closing arguments? What, what is your final place to them for the vote?
I would say that, uh, as I think I've stated on my, on my campaign, uh, Facebook page, I said, for those of you that have your serious doubts, doubts about voting for me, and remember, this, it's only a binary choice, it's either me or Jim Gant for, for post-three. And, and by the way, given what we just discussed about the high turnout rate at Osprey Cove, or, uh, the West Precinct, if you prefer, not voting at all is tantamount to a vote for Jim Gant. I mean, that's just a mathematical fact, okay? And I would remind people that, uh, Billy Hoyleman has, has long since dropped out of the race for post-three, but beware, his name, under some strange state law, will still be on the ballot. So if you cast a vote for him, whether it's just, you know, because you like him or whatever, that's also effectively a vote for Jim Gant, so for God's sake, don't do that. But as I said, for those of you who, who have your doubts, who are frankly opposed to me and may even be afflicted with what I call JDS, Jade Arrangement Syndrome, and you believe all these wild tales about, you know, me being some, uh, uh, you know, film noir monster like, like Godzilla with Jay's face on it rising from the sanctuaries where we're stomping through town seeking out our known enemies and turning them into toe jam. That's not me. That's not my objective, folks. I pledge to you that those of you who have your serious doubts, and even those of you who vote against me, so help me God, come election day, when my first term is up, and I intend to only serve two, you will be tickled to death to go to the polls to vote for me again. That's my promise to you, that's my goal, to do everything in my power to make you say, boy, you know, I should have voted for him years ago, and you should have, by the way.
Well, I should do appreciate that you've come to your home and talking to you about your, your signs and your, your, your perspective on the political system that we have here in St. Mary's. Uh, I don't, personally, I don't know if there's, there's anybody that's actually sat down with you and discussed it openly about your position. So I'm glad you're able to let all on Georgia's come into your home and talk to you about your positions, uh, where you stand on city government. Uh, because you have been, you have been a voice in our community, uh, you know, whether you like the voice or not. You have been a voice politically in our community that people have listened to, uh, whether they take it with a grain of salt or not. But I do appreciate you letting me come into your home.
And you know, everybody that, that recognizes me has, has a strong opinion about, I mean, there's no such thing as a wishy-washy. It's either pro or against. But ironically, between that eight-foot sofa, that chair and that little love seat, you could see every single soul in this county in the last twenty-five years that actually knows me personally very well. And yet, we got all kind of people that think, that act as if they know me, but they don't really. And I really appreciate this opportunity to talk to some of those people via this interview. And I have watched every one of the ones that you've done, you've done an excellent job.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. It's a real service to the community, it really is.